Very good. So let's bring this meeting to order. A good place of allegiance. So can we stand for a place, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, with all due diligence, one nation, and without any individual liberty and judge of law.
Thank you.
We'll call Mary Ann Rosa. You may have made that speech there. Okay. Catherine Raymond.
Yeah.
Oh, Catherine, Mary Ann, here. Jonathan Ramsey, here. Anthony DeBod, here. Herman Lucina.
Present.
Lou Roser.
Here.
Paul Redd Alvin. Paul? Paul? Rachel Ryan? Rachel Ryan? Here. And Tom Winon, here. Okay. Now, the minutes of the meeting is A to G without objection on or to a place of motion of all the minutes of these meetings. But are there any deletions or exceptions in any of these minutes?
Through the chair. So I wasn't present during the meetings on May 26 and June 1.
Okay, so you'll say for those two.
Yes, sir.
Okay, anybody else? Harry Nutt, all in favor of the array of meetings? Stick by by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Change what passes. Chairman's report, I have to look. Okay. So we will now go to public participation. Anybody who would like to speak of public participation? Name and address, please. Anybody?
I'm checking.
Lisa?
I'm checking. I have one, Ms. Catherine Camara.
Okay, Ms. Camara, please name, address, and you're now...
Catherine, you're self muted. I can't unmute you.
Thank you.
Catherine, you have to self unmute yourself.
Okay. I think you can hear me, right?
Yes.
Catherine Camara, 31 Cottage Place, Oakville. Couple of things that I wanted to say. One is that I like the fact that the packet is online, and I don't know if that had to do with COVID. But I had asked for that a long time ago. I've been asked about it several times. So just to let you know that having the packet online, since you now have moved to one public participation at the beginning of the meeting, it is helpful because that way we can see some of what's on there. Because by eliminating the second public participation, we're not able to comment on what takes place in the meeting. It would have to wait another two weeks before comment. So if you leave the packet on, it's better for the public as far as public participation, although I still like having two, but just having said that. I also realize that you're going to be talking about doing something for commercial Realtor services for the town hall and the annex and just hope that whoever you choose will not be somebody that serves in our government at this time because we do have Realtor in government. So I hope that won't happen. And under new business 9E, when you get to it, I hope you will explain what brings us to need the purchase of a security system at the highway department. I don't know what would bring that up at this point, and I also would like to know why it wasn't included in the budget that was just recently passed. So it leads me to believe that something's happened recently that they need security. So I hope that'll be explained when you cover that item. And now I want to go into kind of a lengthy little speech. Because while you've all probably made up your mind about the charter revision report, I feel compelled to comment further after reading yesterday's Waterbury Republican article. CRC Chairman Rob Kane reports that he did his job by getting input from departments, but it was not for the charge of the town council regarding the form of government. I know, because I was at the meetings. And if you took a look, took the time to read the minutes of the CRC meetings, you'll understand what I mean. While Chairman Kane asked all of the town's department heads to go before the CRC, he never asked any of them if a change to our form of government would impact their department. He made no reference to our style of government with any of them whatsoever. The Waterbury Republican January 5th article made it clear Chairman Nguyen thought Chairman Kane was doing the job he was charged, having no idea that at that point Chairman Kane hadn't even considered the council's charge. Chairman Kane suggests that it was a small local minority requesting a vote on governmental change, and that's absolutely false. It is a petitioning majority making the request. It's a ratio of 173 to 1. The criterion for measurement is those who went before the CRC on the matter, not the entire town. Chairman Kane is skewing that data. Rather than thank the petitioners for their input and look into the matter further, Chairman Kane has only sought to minimize their participation in the process. Is this getting all skewed, my voice, because I'm getting feedback? Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we can. It's good.
Okay, because it, all right, anyway. So Chairman Kane also cried that it is a long and arduous process that is not done with the snap of a finger. After all this time, we're now learning that it was just too much for Rob Kane to handle. If he had taken the charge in good faith and started the process from the beginning, over the course of 15 meetings, the CRC could have made a proposal to the town council regarding a form of government. Everyone knows it's a process, which is why the council gave the CRC almost a year to work on it. Chairman Kane ignored the charge for seven months and then dismissed the 173 requests to work on it. Also, in yesterday's news article, Chairman Nguyen said they can go out and get more signatures, force the council to open up the charter again after COVID. Why? Tell me why the residents have to petition the council for something the council already formed a charter revision commission to do. Just by suggesting that, Chairman Nguyen knows that the CRC did not do the job it was tasked. Rob Kane's inability to handle an arduous task is not the residents' fault. Revamp the CRC and reset the deadline, letting interested volunteers do the work. Are the council majority members prepared for the backlash they'll face if the burden of the petition process is put on the residents because of Rob Kane's failure to do the job he was tasked? Now, having said all of that, and you know a new form of government will not be on the November ballot, I would expect that the chairman's report tonight will at least update us on the search for a new town manager. Thank you.
Anybody else? Public participation. Lisa?
Yes, we have Mr. Kane.
Mr. Kane? You're up.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Rob Kane, 59 Taft Circle in Watertown. First, I want to thank you and the members of the town council for putting the charter revision on your agenda for this evening. We appreciate your support and look forward to a positive favorable vote. I want to also thank Rachel Ryan. She, of course, served on our commission for a period of time and gave great input during that process. And actually, gave us a good replacement with Andrew Prince. He was excellent and a very thoughtful guy and really participated well with the group. And I want to thank Rachel for that. All our members, all of them on both sides of the aisle, gave up countless hours from their families, from their jobs, from recreational activities, you can imagine, to participate in the charter revision process, and I'm proud of all of them. We went through the entire charter, line by line, section by section, updated all kinds of outdated language that needed fixing. We went through and corrected outdated numbers, dollar figures, if you will, that go back 10, 20, or better number of years that needed to be adjusted for inflation and the times that we are in. We received great guidance from CCM, which is the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities. Each member was given a research guide on charter revision about the adoption and revision process, local government structures, general information, spreadsheet on salaries across Connecticut. We looked at the forms of government that they were given to us, mayor, council, council manager. We read interesting articles about different communities across the state of Connecticut. And I'm really pleased with the work and effort that our group put forward. And I look forward to your vote this evening. I appreciate you putting this on your agenda tonight and just want to thank all of you for doing what you're doing and appreciate everything. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Kane. Lisa? Anybody else?
Good job. I'm checking.
Take your time. I'm not going to rush this one.
I have Sean Butterley on the line.
Mr. Butterley?
Sean, are you speaking? Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me, Lisa?
Yes, I can, Sean. Go ahead.
Oh, great. Thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the town council. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
God, guys, we don't know out here in the village. I am Sean Butterley, 59 Littleton. Tonight, sadly, I want to take another step back. The Republican majority on the town council will no doubt bless the botched Kane majority report of the charter revision commission. Last night, the town council had an advisory on the...
Excuse me, Mr. Butterley.
Minority. Now, can you hear me, folks? I get a lot of feedback. Can you hear me?
You have to mute one of your pieces of equipment. You must have it on two different pieces of equipment. So you're getting that reverberation.
Okay, thank you. I just shut off my cell phone. I was having trouble getting it. Is that even...
Is that even...
Our Republican auditor does not recognize math... Mr. Avlet and I represent 173 citizens free COVID. Can you hear me, folks?
Yes.
Thank you. We signed the petition asking for this referendum. Why aren't the six Kane supporters on the CRC and the one citizen on the March 10th the absolute minority? It's 173 to 7. Last night, I said to my wife, if we got in our car tonight and drove north, south, east, or west, we'd be free Americans. In Morris, Waterbury, Middlebury, Thomasville, Wickberry, and Bethlehem, the people directly elect their chief elected officials, be it mayor or first selection. But in our town, a small inner circle appoints a town manager whose credentials we don't know and whom we cannot remove. We have to ask the small inner circle that picked him without our vote to remove him. Preposterous. Mr. Avlet and I see our only choice for our particular voters, vote no on all charter changes on the November 3 ballot. The process in producing the Kane majority report is fatally flawed. Then, in 2021, elect town council candidates committed to listening to the people. They can start fresh and appoint a new charter revision commission that is properly vetted with members willing to consider our rights to elect our chief elected as all the smaller counties and always have done. This is doing the democracy in action. Our message tonight to all Watertown hopeful citizens is the following: Vote no on all charter changes on November 3. Strike a blow for the wing with democracy and send a message to autocrats like Rob Kane and those who support his government by fiat. A no vote on November 3 is a vote of no confidence in Watertown's council manager government. Mr. Avlet and I are ready to rally our supporters in the name of democracy. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I did, I did ask her. So she knows.
Lisa?
Yeah, I told her basically she wants to speak.
Lisa?
Yes.
It's not, I'm going to go to...
I don't see...
Okay.
I think that's it.
Lisa?
I think that's all.
I'm going to go with Chairman's report. The only thing I have right now is two letters, one from Gary Olson, a member of Conservation Inland Weapons Agency, which submitted his resignation as of July 4, 2020, and a letter from Galisangri, Watertown Land and Trust, in reference to a friend's freshman farm project purchase, dated June 26, 2020. I'm going to put those in the little list of meetings. Town manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. This is interim town manager John Gavales. Blight continues to be an issue. We've hired a summer intern to begin addressing these blight complaints. He will be out in the field doing inspections and taking appropriate action to address the complaints. My office will be working with him and our town attorney to follow through on any blight issues that are not corrected. We are continuing to address several building issues. The HVAC system, which controls the humidity in the building, has improved significantly. We still have to coordinate with Silver Petricelli to change some specifications in the system to fully correct the problem. We're still working on some issues related to building security, and our committee will be meeting in the morning to address these. We still have some punchless items that need to be fixed, as well as some landscaping issues. Until all these matters are corrected to our satisfaction, I may keep Gary Martin, our clerk of the works, on on a per diem basis after July 31 if I need him. My goal is to resolve these issues by the end of the month. Now, the next important issue on the agenda is the town hall annex and the former town hall building. We hope to have these buildings cleared out of remaining items so they can be placed on the real estate market as soon as possible. This afternoon, I went to the annex with our purchasing agent to look the building over, and I went down into the basement for the very first time. Frankly, I was stunned at the amount of documents and paperwork that are boxed and stored down there. It's a very damp and unhealthy environment. Probably many of these documents have been there for 25 or 35 years, and probably most of them can be shredded. But it's going to be a monumental task to get them out of there and to sort through them and decide what can be kept and what can be shredded. So that will be next on our agenda, and hopefully we can get these buildings on the market as soon as possible. That's all I have tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. The committee really haven't had any meetings. New business, I'm going to ask for vice chairman Catherine Raymond to read the first motion, please.
I make a motion to approve the report of the Charter Revision Commission as modified by the town attorney's technical correction for inclusion on the ballot for the November 3, 2020 presidential election.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Luke Ramsey and Rachel Ryan, I want to read it. After examining our town attorney's position on whether or not we can go to a referendum, I stand by, or we stand by, our original feeling of let the people decide. What may not be possible in November, I firmly believe we should revisit this next year so everyone has a vote. Changing the form of government much prior to the nine of us on this council. Some might think it could be done overnight, but that is not the case. I support putting the question to the board, voters. Whether you view the mayor or not, this change will off the brink of our many other initiatives. For example, what happens to the budget referendum? What happens to the town council? We can't debate and discuss these issues in a month or even six months. I support letting the people vote when it is permissible so that we can get a feel of where the general public would like us to be. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Council? I have a statement that I'd like to go add. Anybody have any comments? Okay. Well, first of all, I'd like to address Ms. Camara's statement that she, I guess she can read my mind or what I'm... I say what I mean, I mean what I say, and no one needs to read into it. When I said that, and I think that the commission did do the job. Now, we've only, we've had two public hearings. We've talked about this for many, many months. This was not decided, and this was not hurried at all. And my, and I talked to many of the council, and this is maybe not a total concession. I don't know if you can confirm that. The town council, next year or the year after, you do not have to open up a town charter and wait 10 years. You can do it next year if you choose. If the council chooses and maybe the public asks next year to create another commission of different people next year and directs them to review and look at form of government, they can do that, understanding that if they want to open up the whole charter, they can, but they did a lot of work in the past year to do this. To not support or not pass this charter now is wasting a lot more money than it would be if we convened just that question next year. So I'm sorry if some of the minority don't like that, but they are perfectly within their rights to look at that next year, and let's do it right as far as looking at form of government. Thank you. Anybody else? I don't need anybody else. Here is...
May I...
Oh, I'm sorry. Your hands up, I'll be looking. Go ahead, Rachel.
I have a question. You just mentioned money, that it would cost money. I'm just curious about what are the costs that would be incurred, or what were the costs incurred for running a charter revision commission? Obviously, paying the attorney is the one thing that comes to mind, and running a referendum, obviously, costs money, but what else might there be in terms of costs?
For what? An additional or what we're having now? Are you, are you talking about the budget cost now with this referendum? With this, with this...
It would cost money. So I'm just asking you to elaborate more on that, like what money, what are the costs involved?
Well, the difference, the difference now is in rejecting this commission and starting all over next year, it's time for attorneys, and they would have to look at the charter all over again. We've approved this charter as it is, and next year, open up another charter if that is so, if that is approved by the council. The work they'd have to do next year would just look at form of government. If we reject this now, we have paid over a year of looking at this whole charter, and then next year, do it all over again. So, yes, it's expensive now. I don't know what the bill is. We haven't got that yet. But to throw the baby out of the bathwater and say, start all over again, it will cost a lot more to recreate the co-commission next year, looking at the whole charter versus approving this one now and next year, looking at form of government only. And that's my point, where I'm trying to save the taxpayers a significant lot of money. I hope that answers your question. If you want, maybe Paul Jethal has an answer to that, but I think, I think I explained it. Rachel, if you have, Rachel, go ahead. If you want, if you want to have a more important question, you can do so.
I mean, if we haven't gotten the attorney's bill, we don't know what the fees are. I just, I just would like to have a little bit more specific evidence and not just say that it's going to cost money because I want it to, it's right by the taxpayers in town. And if this is something that they want, then presumably they would agree with spending the money. But without knowing exactly how much they were talking about, it's hard for the members of the council to make a fully informed decision about this. So I don't know if Attorney Jessel has an answer to it. He obviously wasn't the attorney on the commission. I doubt he has. I did have another question, though, about the actual process. So if we were to vote right now to reject the entire charter, then my assumption is it does not go on the ballot for a vote, or what exactly is the process?
Mr. Jethal? I move you.
Okay, hold on. Yeah.
Sorry, I was muted. So if you reject the report of the Charter Revision Commission, it goes back to the Charter Revision Commission? They can vote to change the plan, they can vote to keep the plan, send it back to the town council, and the town council gets kind of the last word. If you reject it again, it actually could be raised by a petition to end up on a referendum under the statutes.
I was a chair. Paul, would that give us enough time to get on the ballot this year, or would that need to be done next year?
If, if you were to reject this, I think the only way that you could get to referendum this year on anything would be to have a meeting with the Charter Revision Commission, between the Charter Revision Commission and the town council, to discuss what the basic issues are. Frankly, I don't think there's any way that you could get on the ballot in November, a change in the form of government, because virtually every section of the charter is going to have to be changed. Just count up the number of times that's on my mind. So what the managers, excuse me, what the town council says is true. You could pass this charter revision, and right after November, you could actually impanel another Charter Revision Commission to take a look at the form of government, if that were the bent of the council. In either event, it'll be after this November.
And after this November, Mr. Jethal, whether it's rejected, the commission would have to start all over with the charter versus maybe just taking a look at, and if it was approved now, next year, they would just probably have to, if they choose, just look at the form of government. Or mine?
Certainly, all the issues that they reviewed for the last year or almost year would not be something they'd need to look at again.
Okay. That's why, that was, that's what I was getting at. Thank you. Anything else, Rachel? Or anybody else?
I want just one follow-up question. If we take your suggestion, Chairman Nguyen, and look to reopen a Charter Revision Commission again next year, I assume it takes a majority vote of the members of the town council?
Yeah.
Okay.
It takes six affirmative votes, Rachel.
So six, six total?
Right.
Mrs. DeBod?
Yes, my question is for Attorney Jessel, if I may. Attorney Jessel, Section 308, is that, would that allow the electors to, under the criteria provided in the section, petition the town council?
Not for, not for a charter change. It's only 308, and if you take a look at the opinion, my opinion letter that accompanied the public hearing, and I believe is on the website with this section as well, 308 initiatives are only for things done by the town council. So it would be something that the electors would want a ordinance or other measure. If the town council failed to pass that, then they could petition to put that on a referendum. But it's only for ordinances or those types of things. Charter revisions are controlled entirely by the Home Rule Act, Section 1, 7-187 and following.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Harry Nutt, all in. Stick by saying aye. Aye. Oppose?
Oppose.
That's, that would, is Mary Ann here? No. Paul here? I'm just reaffirming. So that's six to one. Vote passes. Thank you. Thank you very much. Number B, next report, next motion.
I need to authorize the town manager to seek proposals for qualification, commercial Realtor services for the sale of the town hall and town hall banner.
And a second? Discussion? Anybody?
Good question. As far as the proposal, is this the town manager that's approving one, or are they coming back to...
No, they're quick comeback. He just authorized the water.
He just authorized the vote here. Anybody else? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Post. Stay. Motion passes. C.
I move to approve a resolution authorizing a bid waiver to utilize the State of Connecticut Department of Administrative Services bid for the purchase of various equipment, materials, and supplies.
To afford speed, expediency, I'm going to ask Roy Kavanaugh, our department head of public works, to explain that. Bid waiver. Second. Now, we will do that. Why?
Roy Kavanaugh, Director of Public Works, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to entertain them. Thank you.
Any questions of our Director of Public Works? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
I just thought Ryan.
I'm sorry, are we on C, or can I ask you a question about E?
No, we're on C.
Okay, so, all right, I have a question about D. Sorry for jumping ahead.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Post. Post. Abstain, motion passes. Now we're on D, make the motion.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing a bid waiver to utilize for a swell which offers competitive bid consortium services to government agencies for the purchase of a 2020 backdoor for an amount not to exceed $468,198.49 and a 2020 Volvo DD 25C roller for an amount not to exceed $54,265.
Have a second.
Second.
Now, Mr. Kavanaugh is available for questions. Any questions?
John, I assume that these were part of the capital budget for water and sewer and maybe another department, or which department does this fall under the budget?
These pieces of equipment are for the Public Works Department. Of course, they're available alone to any other department that would request them.
We didn't repeat that?
Yeah, slower, Roy. We got feedback. Go ahead.
The equipment would be for the Public Works Department as part of the capital improvement equipment plan, and it would also be available to any other town department that would request it. Certain pieces of equipment.
And this is already part of the budget?
Yeah, they're currently budgeted in this fiscal year.
Yeah, this fiscal year. Okay, any other questions? Rachel, if you have any questions? You said you made an important on D.
I have a question about the budget, which was just answered, but I'm just wondering, I mean, I looked at the diagrams and specifications, but if we could just have an explanation of exactly what these pieces of equipment are used for?
Okay, the major piece of equipment is for the backdoor. The major program is for, is for catch face and cleaning and other cleaning on ditch lines and excavations that you can mechanically dig due to the sensitive nature of the project. For instance, when you're excavating around the gas line, you have a big, it's a lot safer to use a big, kind of like a vacuum hose to suck it out. The DEP program is for the catch face and cleaning and other cleaning is part of the MS4 stormwater program, which is a mandate that's been imposed on it for a number of years. The equipment that we're buying, the purchasing, will in fact replace two other antiquated pieces of equipment in the fleet, which are unreliable, but we do attempt to use on a regular basis. The other piece of equipment is a roller. The roller itself is used for asphalt projects and compacting subways and very occasionally potholes, but primarily they're used in asphalt repair projects. Current roller is quite old, and it's a little bit undersized for what we really need to use on the roadways.
Okay, thank you, Ryan.
We have a question. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Post. Stay. Motion passes. C.
I move to approve an appropriation in the amount of $9,947 from the general fund for the purchase and installation of a security system at the Water Town Highway Department.
Have a second. End of discussion.
Roy, can you give us a little detail on this?
Right?
I'm sorry, I just sat down. What was the question?
Yeah, explanation of the fund, of the...
Okay, the funds are being requested for security cameras up the highway. It was in prior year budget. We solicited quotes from three different security companies at that time, working through the purchasing agent. We selected Stanley Security to provide it. They were the lowest responsible bidder. Despite numerous efforts to obtain the actual installation of material, the equipment at the highway garage, we were never able to successfully get them out there. As a result, what we did is at the end of the year, we canceled the purchase orders for Stanley to provide it. We solicited and updated quote from the same company that's providing the security systems at the highway, excuse me, at Hemway, and we're proposing to reappropriate the money back out of the general fund from the canceled POs. The new system is a little bit more than the systems that were canceled prior to this. In answering Ms. Kamara's question, no, there are no specific incidents in the last couple years that have caused us to implement these measures, but it is part of a general security upgrade. The cameras themselves will be positioned and designed to keep an eye on the town gasoline and diesel pumps, keep an eye on the sand salt aisle, and also maintain a visual observation of the parking lot and drivers in the facility.
Got that?
I got it.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Post.
I move to approve the updated part-time seasonal and temporary employee rate schedule of the center, effective pay period beginning July 25th, 2020.
Have a second.
Second.
Any question or explanation?
Can we have, can we have an explanation of why this has come about and explanation of why the increase or how that's tied to what's currently being paid?
John, or...
Yeah. The question was, how is the type that was currently being paid? That was the question, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, if you look at the first document, it was approved in March of 2013, and we're looking at the salary on the present document, this document from 2013 is seven years old. There's very little change in whether it's being paid to those employees. If you look here at the current instructor, 2013 was making $11. That instructor now comes under the specialized instructor, where there is a fee between $1.75 and $15 an hour above minimum wage. If you'll see the, in the original scale, who can play 13, the bottom of the first page is the illustrator, professional artist, who played 13.75, seven years ago. Now, there is a possibility that an artist could be paid $15, not saying there's going to be, that's just within that stamp. These are people that would come in and give perhaps a two-hour court over a five or six-week period. So the financial impact really is not significant. There would be few and far between people that would make upwards of $11 or $12 an hour above minimum wage, and if they did, they would have a special skill. So I don't think it's much financial impact in these two documents, considering one is seven years old, and you might be up a dollar or more an hour seven years later. I don't know if that answers your question, Anthony?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Post. Stay. Motion passes. Pardon? Let's move on to G. I'm sorry, H.
I move to, I move, let's see.
Okay.
Oh, I move effective July 25th, 2020, the hourly wage of the assistant registrar, checkers, ballot clerk, tabulator clerk, office worker, absentee ballot counter be $1 plus minimum wage. I further move that the hourly wages for the following positions be head moderator, minimum wage plus $2.87; moderator, minimum wage plus $2.50; registrar, minimum wage plus $7.75; deputy registrar, minimum wage plus $2; mechanic, minimum wage plus $4.60 all per hour.
Have a second. Second. Discussion. Explanation.
Can we, can we have another explanation of this and whether there's a significant impact or whether this is just housekeeping and due to the minimum wage going up?
Mostly the minimum wage going up.
Right.
And then it ties to minimum wage, but we don't have to address it every year.
Right, it ties to the minimum wage. So when minimum wage goes up at a certain amount of money, they will continue and they will get that, that increase to keep up with the increase in minimum wage. It's just a fair thing to do, and we don't have to keep looking at it. Okay, Anthony?
Yes.
Any other question? Comments? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Post. Stay. H.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing tax refund.
End of discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Post. Stay. Motion passes. Aye.
I move to approve the settlement agreement for the Water Town Golf Club versus Town of Water Town.
Have a second. Second. Okay, discussion. Explanation. Anybody?
Mr. Wynn, we have...
Lisa, go ahead.
No, we're good.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Post. Stay. Motion passes. Motion to adjourn. Second. All in favor? Adjourn. Thank you very much. We'll see you in the next one. Thank you, sir. Lisa?
I'll be right there.